Are you ready for a city attorney?
I think just give him a minute. It's six twenty eight on my clock.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, then you guys need to fix the clock up there.
Sorry.
Six thirty two, their time. Um, please, Ryan, would you like to lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise and follow Commissioner.
Place your right hand over your heart and ready begins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Great. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Secretary Rhea, would you mind reading the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Luhon?
Present.
Commissioner Sakali?
Here.
Commissioner Uva?
Present.
Commissioner Legaspi?
Present.
And Chair Gera?
Here. Great. Well, does our community development director have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, good evening, Chair Gera. I just wanted to let you know that on the dais, each of you should have a revised agenda for tonight. Just as minor modification, we're adding number four, which is oath of office for our newest commissioner, Mr. Gil Legaspi. And also, there's copies available at the back of the room for the public.
Great, thank you. Our, our planning secretary, would you mind swearing in, Mr. Legaspi?
Absolutely.
I got sworn in in the back. And I didn't get to give a speech like he did for twenty minutes the other day, so.
The newly appointed planning commissioner, please stand. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Gil Legaspi.
Do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And.
And.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth.
That I will bear truth.
Faith.
Faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And.
And.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any.
Without any.
Mental reservation.
Mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that, and that I will.
Will and faithfully.
Will and faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, you may be seated.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This is the time set aside for oral communications from the planning commission. Does any commissioners wish to make an announcement, report on a conference meeting, or request ideas for future agenda? I'll start, am I right, Mr. Luhon?
None at this time.
Okay, great. Mr. Cycling?
None at the moment.
Okay, Ms. Uba?
None, but just a warm, hearty welcome to Commissioner Legaspi.
Okay, Mr. Legaspi?
Thank you, Commissioner Uba. I have none, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. Does community director, community development director have a report on city council agenda or any general updates for it?
Hi, I have general updates. Our staff is continuing to work on the city's general plan update, which is updating all the elements of our general plan following our recent rezoning item that we brought to the planning commission and the city council, which was a huge endeavor. You'll be hearing more about that, including possible email to you showing you some links and some documents just so that we can keep that topic fresh in your minds as commissioners and just as members of the community. Also, we have, I recently, tonight, earlier today, emailed all of you and we posted the, this month's development activity report for the community development department. And that includes highlights of various development projects in the city. We update the status of the projects as much as possible. We try to keep them fresh. And then also, we have a chapter dedicated to code enforcement activities related to upgrading shopping centers, working with property owners to maintain their, their properties, residents, and just general communication to the public on maintaining our community nice and clean and tidy. So just look for that in your email box, and that's all what I have tonight.
Great, thank you very much. I'll use, I know we have, we have a, it's our consent calendar, we're going to approve the minutes later. But you and I talked earlier about, you know, you have a process now, is this a good time for you to mention?
Yes, just a general update, I spoke to Chair Gera earlier this evening, just as in preparation for tonight's meeting, and I shared that we have various minutes that are outstanding for this commission. And we are on a calendar to bring all those minutes up to date, including bringing one or two minutes in the next following, one or two minutes in the next following meeting so we can catch up. There, there was a shift to provide a little bit more detail, even some verbatim comments from commission and members of the public. So we did have to shift gears a little bit with staff to make sure we watch those videos again, to make sure we can embellish a little bit more about the dialogue that happens here at the commission. So we're in the process of updating the minutes to include more detail.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
So now is a time set aside for public hearings, for a public hearing for PLN twenty five zero 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 one four. It's a zoning text amendment. Does the planning commission secretary Rhea have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Great. So will the community development director introduce staff making the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gera. Tonight, we have our senior planner, Abraham Luna, providing the presentation on tonight's item for the ADU ordinance.
Good evening, Chair Gera and members of the planning commission. Before you tonight is PLN twenty five zero 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 one four, a zoning text amendment to the Danni Municipal Code for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. The zoning text amendment is a proposed ordinance that amends sections ninety four fourteen and ninety seven oh six of the Danni Municipal Code. Reason for the proposed ordinance is when state legislators pass new bills amending ADU regulations, it therefore creates certain provisions in local ordinances to become out of compliance with state law.
If I can just ask you to adjust your microphone a little bit, thank you.
Better. Cities are then required to update their municipal codes to ensure these regulations meet compliance standards. In addition, after the most recent ordinance in twenty twenty three, the Department of California and Community, sorry, the California Department of Housing and Community Development met with the city to discuss certain provisions that were found to be out of compliance with state law, which I will discuss later in this presentation. Since the ordinance of, since the introduction of ADU law in twenty sixteen, there has been a total of seventeen bills that have amended the government code to regulate ADUs. All seventeen bills were summarized in the staff report for your reference. Tonight, I will just be discussing seven laws that have been adopted since twenty twenty three, as they are the most relevant laws that call for this amendment. And starting with twenty twenty three, Assembly Bill nine seven six amends a previous assembly bill, which would have allowed the city to require owner occupancy for ADUs submitted after January first, twenty twenty five. The amendment eliminates that date and prohibits the city from requiring owner occupancies for ADUs. JADUs, however, are still required to be owner occupied. Assembly Bill ten thirty three gives the opportunity for the city to allow separate conveyance, which is the sale of ADUs as condominiums. The city will not be allowing the separate sale of ADUs at this time. Assembly Bill thirteen thirty three requires the city to have a program in place for pre-approved ADU plans. The program allows designers to submit their plans, get them pre-approved by the city, and make available to the public as plans they can choose from to use on their own property. The city currently has this program in place with one designer in the process to become part of that list. And lastly, Assembly Bill four three four gives enforcement authority to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, to enforce provisions in the Housing Crisis Act, Permit Street Lightning Act, ADUs, and the Housing Accountability Act. And moving on to twenty twenty four, Senate Bill four seven seven renumbered the government code to make it easier for the general public to navigate the various ADU provisions in state law. And then the next two are the larger changes to the ordinance. Assembly Bill twenty five thirty three removes the ability for a local agency to deny a unpermitted ADU built before January first, twenty twenty, unless the city deems it, deems the unpermitted ADU to violate Government Code section seventeen nine twenty point three of the Health and Safety Code.
So can I ask a question on there? I don't know if we'd rather me just wait till the end or do it as we do it?
We can ask questions.
Okay, that, that one's kind of crazy, isn't it? You know, so that's, I guess it's determined by our inspectors whether it's safe or not. But even though it was unpermitted, seven hundred and fifty square feet in the backyard, no setbacks wrong and whatever, we can't say anything about it if it was built before twenty twenty?
Correct. It does restrict the planning division from requiring certain development standards. However, if it's deemed to be unfit for habitation, that's when we could deem it unfit for habitation.
Right. But I mean, they could have illegally built it too close to the wall, the setbacks and all the other stuff on there. We can't do anything about it.
Yeah, and I can maybe just add to that a little bit. So the, the, the bill does require the city to create a process for legalizing the structure that includes inspections and permits to ensure that the unit is safe, that there's heating provided, but it does provide relief from zoning development standards.
So if they build it two feet next to the setback to the house next door, tough luck if it was nineteen.
That, that is, that, that could be on the fence, that, because.
Good one.
The building code does have fire separation requirements that could kick in. So that would be, although it's a development standard, the building code would evaluate whether the construction is adequate to meet the fire separation requirements.
All right, great, thank you, sorry. Thank you.
And lastly, Senate Bill twelve eleven, that increases the number of potential ADUs in the multifamily. Previously, the government code limited the development of two ADUs and now increases it to eight, depending on the existing number of units on the property. This law also prohibits a local agency from requiring the replacement of surface parking when removed for ADU construction. As previously stated, following the adoption of the ordinance in twenty twenty three, HCD met with previous staff to discuss certain provisions that did not comply with state law. On the left, you see a summary of those provisions found by HCD, and on the right is how staff resolve them. The deficiencies identified were related to the number of ADUs allowed on a single-family lot. State law allows the combination of converted ADUs, new construction ADUs, and JADUs on a single-family home. Second.
The, the third one from the bottom, does that, it's regardless of lot size? The third from the bottom, which says all ADUs should meet city and, and so forth, is that regardless of lot size or?
That is regardless of lot size, there is other development standards that must be met after a certain threshold of state law, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second, JADUs are allowed for only single families. Third, how high is measured cannot differ from other development standards in, in the city, cannot differ from other residential development in the city. Fourth, der restrictions can only be required for JADUs. Fifth, the city cannot enforce rent reporting for ADUs when not required for other residential development. Sixth, the city's specific development standards and design standards can only be required for ADUs that are not statewide exempt. And second to last is the city cannot enforce the location of an ADU entrance on the second story. And lastly, the city cannot require washer and dryer connections for all ADUs. All of these items have been addressed in the proposed ordinance by either removing the text or by amending the, the language. And I know that was a lot of information, so I would just kind of explain how the types of ADUs are allowed on the various lots. So to your left is single-family zone lots. To the far left is a combination of what's allowed for a single family, which is a JADU, a detached new construction, sorry, a new construction ADU and a converted ADU. So on the far left, you have a converted ADU from a garage, a JADU part of the existing square footage of the home, and then a new detached ADU. Towards the middle, you have almost the same scenario with a single family. JADU converted from existing square footage, a newly constructed attached ADU, and a converted detached garage now an ADU. And on the far right, you have a multifamily zone lot, which allows for detached ADUs limited to the existing number of units on the multifamily lot, which is up to eight. And then you're allowed twenty five percent of the existing number of units in the multifamily to be converted into new ADUs. So state law mandates that all cities must allow an ADU that meets certain minimum provisions from government section. These are referred to as statewide exempt ADUs, which are found in Government Code section six six three two three. These ADUs are not required to comply with local development standards. The minimum provisions are as follows. For single-family properties, there are ADUs that have been converted from existing space and that has, that has a separate exterior access from the primary home. Second, a new constructed ADU of eight hundred square foot or less that meets the four foot setbacks. And separately, in multifamily, the conversion of in-house space and is limited to twenty five percent of the existing number of units. And lastly, up to eight ADUs depending on the number of existing units on the property. Or at least two ADUs for a proposed multifamily dwelling that meet the four foot setbacks. ADUs outside of these standards are required to comply with the provisions outlined below. These standards were written to ensure high-quality design that reflect the property's characteristics. I'll highlight a few to not go too long, but these characteristics are as follows. Covered front entries that are consistent or compatible with the primary dwelling. Front entrances that are to be oriented towards the street. Second-story windows and glass doors for ADU shall be frosted and obscured. ADUs larger than five hundred square feet are required to have a washer and dryer connection. And lastly, maximum ADU size is limited to a thousand square feet and must comply with the local development standards of, such as FAR, lot coverage, front setbacks, and such. The proposed ordinance addresses all of comments from HCD and the updates to state law. In addition, the changes to this ordinance allows staff to provide further clarification in certain provisions. And over the past few days, staff has found opportunity in the ordinance to further clarify provisions than what was previously proposed. On the dais in front of you is a redlined version of the ordinance that does not change the content as previously proposed, but does provide additional clarification to the public to avoid any misinterpretation of the language in the ordinance and easy applicability for staff. In addition to the ordinance, it is found to be consistent with the general plan and the housing element. The housing element outlines objectives to facilitate the creation of ADUs. And as such, these objectives were to implement a program for peer-approved ADU plans, which I discussed earlier, and creating a one-stop ADU webpage on the city's website. And since the introduction of ADUs in twenty eighteen to the city, the city has issued six hundred and thirty-six ADU permits to be developed throughout the city. And as mentioned, the, the new website will have educational handouts with frequent inquiries staff receive at the counter and over the phone. Following the adoption of the ordinance, staff is ready to implement the new webpage with educational handouts readily available to the public. And in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopts the redline resolution as modified, Resolution number twenty five forty forty five, recommending approval by the city council of a zoning text amendment amending sections ninety four fourteen and ninety seven oh six of Article nine of the Danni Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and sections within Chapter one of Article nine containing definitions. Thank you. We're available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions from fellow commissioners?
I have a question. Questions? Is there a minimum lot size to have ADU on a family residential lot?
There is no minimum lot size, no.
So basically, as long as you meet the setback of four feet from either side, you can have an ADU up to eight hundred square feet?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Another leading question, how does the city control the, the electric bill, the water services? These ADUs would have their own water meter, Edison meter, or gas meter, whatever the case may be? Or it's fed from the original house back into ADUs? How do you, how do you, how does the city control that?
So there is certain provisions, for example, if it's statewide exempt ADUs, which are angels square feet or less or converted from existing square footage, you're not required to provide a separate utility. If a ADU is proposed with a new home built from the ground up, then yes, it is required to be separate utilities. And also, if it's outside of the statewide exempt ADUs, which is eight hundred to a thousand, then those ADUs are required to have separate utilities, yes.
Eight hundred and, or more square feet?
Correct.
Okay, would, that would put the burden on the utility companies to provide you with that, with these meters, like Edison? Would they give you a separate meter?
They will give you a separate meter, yes.
They would?
The city initiates the, initiates the process with the Building and Safety Division upon permit issuance, and then the applicant contacts Edison to, you know, go through the process of getting a, a meter installed.
So if I build an ADU up to eight hundred square feet and want to rent it out, how do I control the usage of utility from the renter?
At the applicant's request, we could still provide a utility meter, however, because of state law, it's not required. So if the, if the tenant or the property owner, for example, does want it, they could have it, yes.
Okay. Another question, if I may. AB one zero three three, did, did it say allow the sale of ADU as a condominium? Can you go back to that slide that says the AB one zero three three? Towards the beginning.
So for clarification, it allows the jury section to adopt a ordinance to allow the sale. It doesn't require a city to allow the sale. So it's at the city's discretion to allow it. At this time, though, the city has opted out of it.
Okay, so if in the event the city would allow that, then you would have to have some kind of subdivision?
Correct. It, it would go through the same process as a condominium subdivision, yeah.
And then you, and then if you go through that, then they should have a, a minimum square foot lot for the residential as compared to ADU?
Chair Gera, if I may, address the question from Commissioner Sakali. The, the question that's being asked of staff is more of a hypothetical. The ordinance as drafted for your consideration tonight does not include an option to be able to sell or convey an ADU separate from the main dwelling.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a question on the follow-up, though? But there's something in here that says it requires a separate address. So how does that play in with that? So you have a separate address, but you just, you can't sell it, I guess?
Correct, yeah. And the way addresses are done in the city, it's, it's, it's a letter address. So it is the primary dwelling A, and that, that A is the ADU.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it is tied to the same property, though.
Okay. And, and who noticed? The, the post office, I guess, would, I mean, when they'll deliver, they'll deliver them. I saw that you have to have a, a mailbox or something visible from the street or something in there, right?
Correct, yeah. There is certain provisions for fire safety, for example, that it requires the owner to have an address on the primary dwelling and the ADU visible from the street. I believe the post office does get records from the county for that addresses. addresses.
Right. Mr. Scioli, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to pile on a question on yours.
No, these are good questions. We'd like to know these. Thank you.
Okay, great.
I don't specifically have a question for you, but just a comment. I never realized there were so many changes. Seventeen changes in, you know, not a very long period of time, and then seven changes within the last year. That's quite a bit. Uh, your report was amazing. It's very informational. I'm going to keep this because I get calls all the time from clients wanting to know stuff about ADUs, so I will keep this in my office. And thank you for your great report.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Legaspi?
I, I have, my comment is just out of curiosity more than anything. Out of the twenty, last year, hundred and fifty...
One.
One permits issued. How many have actually broken ground? How many are up and going? Roughly?
That may be a little difficult to answer. I'll have Alfonso maybe chime in.
Oh, sure. Pass the buck. Yeah, no.
Don't quote me, but.
Fifty percent.
We have, we have recently been doing a bigger breakdown. We're, we're working on what's called a annual progress report, which breaks down what's been constructed, on what we started inspections on. So we'll have a clearer number for you. And if I recall off the top of my head, I believe it was about one thirty who broke, broke ground. But we'll have an accurate number for you on the March fifth meeting.
And a follow-up question. How, our, our amount of development in, in our pipeline, how does that compare to most of our neighboring cities? Are we very active? Or are we behind to most cities around us?
With regards to ADUs?
Yes, sir.
You know, we, I, I, we haven't done the research as to, so what other cities are allowing and what their level of production is. Uh, we can also have that information for you at a, at a later meeting.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate your report. I've seen in the growth in the ADU since the, the three in twenty eighteen to the hundred and fifty-one. It's crazy. Um, have you received any complaints on parking issues? Has the city gotten issues on there? Because I hear that all the time, too.
Parking is a complaint that we receive often at the counter for ADU development, yes.
Is there a way to combat that? Or, I mean, what do we, you guys have done a lot to mitigate and push back as much as possible, and we appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I, I would say state law has taken away a lot of discretion when it comes to parking standards and whatnot. As they constantly update, uh, allowances for deviations from parking, so it's, it's very difficult to combat that.
Okay. This, these, all those, and like, uh, Carrie was mentioning earlier, Ms. Uva, there are so many in the last couple of years. Um, it takes away so much local control. And Sacramento is literally, it's the crazy legislation that forcing this on our communities, whether we want it or not. Uh, so when people call me and ask me about it, I used to send them to the council, and now I said, here's Blanca Pacheco's phone number and address, and here's Senator Archuleta's phone number and address. There are the crazy people that are part of the crazy people up in Sacramento, and I have respect for them as individuals. But not all cities are the same, and that's the problem on there. So I'd be surprised if this number doesn't keep growing. I've seen them some in my neighborhood, and it's like, really? And it's just like, you know, so I know your hands are tied, so I want to say thank you for pushing back as much as possible on that.
Thank you.
So, and want to encourage you to keep doing that. Tell the council we said so. So, okay, thank you. Um, does the Planning Commission have any other questions of staff on top of that? So before I open the public hearing, this would be the time for the Planning Commissioners to disclose any pre-hearing discussion that the Commissioners may have had about the item. Anybody?
No, nothing.
I have none.
Okay.
None.
I told everybody I could how stupid this is, so I continue to say that almost on a weekly basis. So I have lots of communication on it. Uh, public hearing is now open. May staff confirm if there's been any correspondence in favor or opposition to it? Okay. You have none? Sorry. Oh, I'm looking at you and I'm like talking to them. So I'm so sorry, Rhea.
No correspondence.
Okay, great. In favor or opposition. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition of the item? Looking out, there's two people out there. And anyway, so I assume not. Uh, okay, so the public hearing is now closed. It's time for the Planning Commission to deliberate. Um, I'll start off with the left on there, Mr. Legaspi.
Commissioner, uh, Chair Gera, I echo your concern as far as parking. I, um, I live on Arena, and it's, I see it. There's four, there's two projects, projects that were, that were, um, started and completed the last couple of years. There's a third up, up and going, and there's another one that's scheduled to break ground in the corner of my property. Um, more and more cars, more and more traffic issues. I'm curious to know what the outcome is going to be five, ten, twenty years down the road. I'm concerned. However, we do need housing, and we all know that. We need, we have Arena numbers to be, uh, met. So that's my only comment to that, sir.
You know, I got a quick question. Does this count towards our Arena numbers?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, Ms. Uva?
I agree with those sentiments exactly. Um, I just feel our hands are kind of tied on this one, and it's just got to be moved forward. Um, the average family nowadays has at least four cars. Where do these people park? Absolutely, it's a problem. Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Scioli?
I, I think you said it all. Uh, it's, it's parking is all over the Blounts, the city. Go to South Gate, go to, to Linwood, they all have the same problem. And if we continue on this road, uh, we don't know what's going to happen.
We ought to build an ADU next to every legislator in Sacramento. Say, here, okay, three new cars, and, yeah, three new cars on it. Thank you, sir. Mr. Luhon?
My sentiment is the same. You know, unfortunately, we do have to comply, and we want to make sure that we do have abundance of, of housing, you know, because, uh, you know, it is affecting our schools right now, our school systems, and enrollment is down. And I think this will definitely bring back also some, you know, more kids to our public schools, you know, and private schools, too.
Yeah. I'm amazed that this eight hundred square foot thing can just be built like this, and the city has no other, so what's the pleasure of the, I said my comments earlier, so, um, everybody knows where I stand on there. What is the pleasure of the Planning Commission? Uh, does anyone like to have a motion?
I make a motion to pass, uh, PLN zero zero one four. I'm trying to see where, where was that? The resolution, uh, revision, I'm sorry. Item number PLN twenty-five zero zero one four, revisions to resolution proposed ordinance and resolution number twenty-five dash four zero four five.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote. Can we, can we put a regret next to it?
Motion passes with a vote of five zero.
Okay. So can we make, seriously, on this one, make sure that the comments are word for word? So when ten, five, ten years from now, people yell at us, oh, you guys passed this on there. Well, we didn't have a choice. Um, anyways, so, um, this item will be heard by the City Council at a future date. Uh, we'll be sending this recommendation to the City Council, uh, and it'll be introduced to, in the public in a similar manner as today's Planning Commission meeting, and members of the public are going to be welcome to join to provide additional testimony. Maybe we could invite our legislators to that meeting on there. That'd be good. They're, they're reps, and I'm not kidding. So, non-agenda public comment, there's one person on there. There's a yellow card. Did she have a yellow card? No? Okay, all right, good. So we'll skip the non-agenda public comments since there'd be nobody, uh, all the cards are, are still in the back. Consent calendar. Okay, let's go to our consent calendar. Okay, does anybody wish to make any motions regarding our consent calendar? And, oh, and by the, so does anybody want to discuss any of the items on there? There's the, there's the letter in there on our map extension on there from, uh, that, the church? So that's in there. But so that's part of the consent calendar, so we're not going to prove it, pull it unless somebody wants to pull it. Uh, and then we have the approval, as we talked about, the March sixth and March twentieth meeting, uh, of last year. So is there any motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move to accept the items on the consent calendar.
Okay, second it. Okay, all those, please vote.
Motion passes five zero to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, great. So, uh, at this time, we're in other business, the election of officers. I'm sorry. Yes, sir? Oh, okay.
Uh, just a point of clarification. Commissioner Legaspi participated in the vote on the consent calendar tonight, which included the minutes.
That's right.
Those minutes were from meetings, um, when he was not a member of the commission. Is ordinarily permissible to take such a vote? As long as the commissioner, who was not present at the time, reads those minutes and educates himself or herself about them, they can also reasonably rely that those minutes are, um, correct and accurate as prepared by city staff. So just for the record, that, that vote is permissible if you wish to have taken it. And forgive me for not interacting sooner.
Mr. Funk, I, I went through it, and I read, uh, both sets of minutes, and I understand.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, but now you got to go back and listen to it, too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So you got to do both. Anyways, okay, so, uh, item number ten, uh, election of officers. Uh, at the last meeting, you know, this is my first meeting as chair, been vice chair, and at the last meeting, uh, we voted on Mr. Morales being the vice chair. Uh, Mr. Morales is no longer. He's been replaced by Mr. Legaspi, and, uh, so we need a vice chair. Uh, and with that, because last time, the other folks did not want to do it, um, I'll make a motion that we make Ms. Uva, uh, the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody else who would like to discuss that, or have any? Okay.
Are you guys, are you guys okay with that?
Of course.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I accept.
Okay, great. All right. So the motion is made and seconded. Do I want to vote, please?
Motion passes five zero for vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it. We didn't break a record, but it's pretty quick. Is there anything else, uh, Mr. Funk, that you would like to bring up at this time?
Timing.
There is not, Chair, but thank you.
Okay. Uh, anything, ma'am?
I, I just, um, just, uh, procedurally, uh, welcome to Chair Gera in your first, uh, twenty, meeting for twenty twenty-five, and congratulations to Vice Chair Uva. It's a pleasure to work with all of you. Um, just to, um, inform the rest of the commission, uh, city staff, uh, including our city attorney, John Funk, met with our newest commissioner, Legaspi, last week, and we gave them our orientation on, uh, being a planning commissioner. So congratulations to you on, uh, finishing your first planning commission meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, uh, if there are any absences or vacations or trips that you're planning, if you could email or call me, uh, inform Rhea Alfonso, we're working on our twenty twenty-five forecast of meetings. We have various development projects on the pipeline. Um, as you know, development projects are very fluid, and so we're trying to pin when, which month they're going to come in, but we can't always be exact. But if we know there's going to be a quorum issue, then we can try to gear that project towards the correct meeting so that, uh, we're not left without having a meeting to hold. Um, just to let you know, it looks like we might have a quorum issue on April second, um, and some absence, another absence of another commissioner in the month of June. So again, as you're planning your vacations or trips or work meetings and things like that, if you can just let us know as soon as you can. So if we have a quorum issue, we can plan ahead of time. And then I also wanted to let you know some really exciting news that I announced to staff yesterday. Uh, we've had a, a key vacancy in the planning division for as long as I've been with the city, which is almost, uh, over a year and a half. Uh, we have, uh, the manager that oversees the planning division, uh, that position has been vacant. The title of that position is now Deputy Director of Community Development overseeing the planning division. Uh, it was previously called the city planner. Uh, that position of Deputy Director overseeing planning will report directly to me as a community development director, and I'm pleased to announce that that position has now been filled. Um, and the candidate will be starting on March third, Monday, and her name is Swadi Meshram. She is, uh, most recently the planning manager at the city of Buena Park. She has extensive experience working with local municipalities and the private sector, has a background in architecture, has a wealth of information. So, um, can't wait for you all to meet her and for her to work with the rest of the team. So, um, one key piece of the planning division is, is going to be filled, so I'm very pleased to be able to share that news with you.
That's a long title. I mean, if you take the initial, does that come out the Doge, baby? No?
Yeah, we have other, other departments that have deputy directors as well, public work, so we're trying to standardize as much as we can in some of those key management positions.
Thank you. And to backtrack a little bit on what Irma had said earlier, I went through her, so my, I'm the other person. She was nice. I don't have a problem on there. In June, uh, I'll be in VC a couple of times on the thing, so I can't make the meetings, but obviously the meetings should go on, or, you know, we can change the weeks on there. But please go through it, and, and Rhea had sent us the list of all the dates and go through it, because we understand there's, you know, things that are already on the calendar that, you know, speaking things and whatever. So please go through that with her, and make the best accommodations on there. I don't know, is it legal to change something from the second to the third, or the third to the first week, or does that matter? Is that something up to you?
We typically like to keep our development projects and entitlements, you know, on the regularly scheduled planning commission meetings, and we're typically able to conduct our business. Um, on a rare occasion, we may need to call for a special meeting. I don't foresee that based on the information I have now, but if that were the case, that would be an option.
Okay. Well, like I said, in the month of June on there, depending on what the fellow commissioners, if they're out of town, or whatever, you may have instead of having to go two months, two meetings without it. So maybe come up with that. But please call her and let her know that.
So you want to change the meeting because you're going to be on vacation?
I'm not on vacation. I'm actually working. Smart alec, sir. Yeah, it's, that one's not vacation. Uh, they're both of them. Anyway, thank you. No, we understand. Anyways, having no further comment. Uh, meetings adjourned.